Well, good evening. Welcome to the May 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. The city clerk will please take the roll.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Bulo?
Here.
Hayes?
Present.
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Mugawar?
Here.
Seven present.
This evening, Councilmember Ford will leave us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first up this evening, we have a presentation. We have the Acanthus Awards this evening. So I'll invite Ms. Shirley Bravender-Maddox up to present those this
Good evening. It's a privilege to be here during Historic Preservation Month when awards are presented all across the country for preserving our historic sites and buildings. We begin, oh, the Acanthus, by the way, is a leaf that was used in architectural design 500 B.C. by the Greeks and then the Romans, and we continue to emulate it. Very often you'll see it in the tops of columns in our buildings. So that's for which our awards are named. We begin today with honoring and congratulating Aaron Wagner and Deanne Christensen. Do you want to come down, please? We're beginning in one of the earliest remaining buildings on the south side of the Fox River, the three-story brick building on South Main, Soper &amp; Spikes Furniture Manufacturing and Retail in historic Brooklyn. The 1870s photo of the bridge shows how this building and the Brooklyn Firehouse to the west are dominant structures. The 1883 Sanborn maps show these two buildings and also include the Schmidt Milling Company. These three buildings today remain the cornerstone of South Main Street and Sixth, and the city I know is doing lots to focus on this area in revitalizing and developing. 601 South Main, built about 1868, right after the Civil War, is one of the few Italianate structures on the south side. It preserves elements of the original storefront. There are three other attached, two-story commercial buildings to the south. The storefronts have undergone some changes, most notably 603. However, the basic configuration and cast iron columns remain intact. The tall windows on the second floor are segmentally arched, and those on the third floor are rounded. The newest owners, Aaron Wagner and Deanne Cushman, have enthusiastically taken on the challenge of rehabilitating these buildings, some with rather colorful histories. They have replaced 26 tall windows on the second and third floors with four over four panes replicating the original style windows and fitting the historic arched openings. The first-floor commercial storefronts in this block of buildings have been painted in a historic color palette, but most amazing is the construction of the 603 storefront, returning it to an historic commercial storefront. We congratulate and welcome the continued efforts of Aaron Wagner and Deanne Cushman as they adopt and rehabilitate Oshkosh's historic treasures. Congratulations.
So on behalf of the City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission, we are pleased to recognize the contributions of Aaron Wagner and Deanne Cushman for the rehabilitation of the original facade of the very early Oshkosh commercial buildings at 601, 603, 605 South Main Street, for the replacement of 26 upper-story windows, the recreation of the 603 commercial storefront, and painting the storefronts in a historic color palette. I'd like to thank you for your efforts and congratulations on the award this year.
Our next people to honor are Ada and Crystal Ramirez. Would you come down, please?
The City of Oshkosh Landmarks Commission recognizes Ada and Crystal Ramirez with the Acanthus Historic Preservation Award for appropriate maintenance efforts that enhance Oshkosh history and protect our cultural resources through the painting of the residence at 926 North Main Street. This very fine Queen Anne residence was built in 1897. The photo of this house appeared in the 1898 publication, Oshkosh of Today, described as "the home of Alfred Kraft McComb. He came to Oshkosh in 1892 and was a prominent real estate investor of the time who owned over 100,000 acres of timberland in Wisconsin, more than anyone else. McComb had access to some of the finest wood in the country, and this home reflects the quality of woods used in constructing the exterior and the interior. This home is graced with a slender three-story tower and six overlapping gables, not seven gables. The Landmarks Commission, in recognizing this painting project, acknowledges the value of old growth timber wood used in this and so many other Oshkosh homes, both exterior wood siding and interior woodwork, including hardwood floors. A much easier approach would have been to cover up or tear off the valuable wood than to paint a three-story house. Instead, time and money were used to conserve and preserve the valuable timber of a bygone era. This project serves as an example for all owners of wooden buildings to celebrate the beautiful homes we have in Oshkosh. Painting preserves our wood-sided historic homes and is a means by which we can achieve greater sustainability. Conserving buildings encourages the revitalization of our existing neighborhoods and has been proven to be a powerful economic tool. May this home enjoy another 125 years. Congratulations, Ada and Crystal.
On behalf of the City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission, we're pleased to recognize the contributions of Ada and Crystal Ramirez. Maintaining the A.C. McComb home, built in 1897 in Queen Anne style at 926 North Main Street, painting the siding of this house with six gables and a three-story tower ensures that the old growth wood siding will serve for another 125 years. I'd like to thank you for your efforts on this project and congratulations again.
Our final award is to Cal Schultz and Andy Dumke of North Point Development. The former St. Mary's School and Hall, built in 1904 and 1925 and designed by Milwaukee architect E. Brillmeyer and Oshkosh architects Aller &amp; Jensen, was placed on the State and National Register of Historic Places in 2021. North Point Development owners Andy Dumke and Cal Schultz purchased the historic school, gymnasium, and hall. They worked with the Wisconsin State Historic Preservation Office to comply with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. No easy task for the faint-hearted, but the results are rewarding. They not only preserved and restored the historic elements of the building, but adapted it to create 33 unique apartments providing senior housing. All the windows that could be repaired were restored. Those that needed to be replaced were shipworm approved and ordered from New York. The tall windows throughout the building offer light and views of the Gothic St. Mary's Church or the surrounding residential neighborhood. The classrooms, hallways, restrooms, and closets were reconfigured into living spaces. The basketball court paintings have been retained on the wood gymnasium floor, now used as a recreation center for the tenants. The magnificent hardwood floors and terracotta flooring were refinished and polished and will serve for many more generations. The public saw a huge transformation of the exterior brick masonry. The owners hired masonry restoration from Milwaukee to carefully clean and protect the historic masonry, which ensures that the structure survives for another 125 years. The school bell is back in the tower. The Cabrini School lofts, named for the recent school name, are all filled with seniors who can enjoy life in comfortable housing and feel part of a wonderful residential neighborhood. Thank you to Andy, Cal, and Susan Hershberg, and all who helped to make this historic restoration project a lesson in sustainability. May this be replicated many times as we use our historic buildings for adaptive reuse and provide another opportunity to serve our Oshkosh community. Congratulations.
On behalf of the City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission, I'm pleased to recognize the contributions of North Point Development for their restoration and adaptive reuse of the historic St. Mary's School and Hall, built in 1904 and 1925, designed by E. Brillmeyer &amp; Sons and Aller &amp; Jensen, hopefully I got that right, for preserving and utilizing the historic elements of this former school and hall to creatively provide 33 unique apartments for senior housing. Again, thank you for your efforts on this amazing project and congratulations. Again, thank you and congratulations to all of our award winners. As Shirley pointed out, these projects aren't always the easiest to undertake, and they're definitely not for the faint of hearted. But once you've completed, once you've gone through that process, you know, these commercial buildings, these residential structures, they look pretty cool, pretty awesome, and it's really great to see the efforts being put into these structures. So again, congratulations. Next up, we move on to citizen statements to council. I didn't have anybody registered, but I think Ms. Deener would like to address us. Come on up, Ms. Deener.
I was wondering who painted the house that's right next to mine.
Oh, is it? Yeah, nice. If you wouldn't mind, name and address just for the record.
My name is Patricia Deener. I don't see Chief Smith here or Captain Schultz, the other officers here.
Your address, Patty.
1316 Broad.
Thank you.
We come this evening. We brought it up. I don't know if Dave, the city attorney, will have something to do about it with the motor scooters. They need to obey, just like a person driving a car. And they were going to check in to see what's going to go on, if they're going to have to be licensed, or how it's going to work, because before, you know what? We've got so many different vehicles, different vehicles driving in the city, because it gets close. It was close today for me, striking. It would not have been my fault. I used caution, but the other one did. So I think they need to, you guys need to check into this. And then our concerns are, my friends, we live on Sawyer, the tree people were cutting the tree. There was a couple calls due to it, my vehicle and another person's vehicle getting scratched on the top of the car on Sawyer. They came and fixed it. It was very nice. And then another concern where we are concerned, and my friends on Sawyer are concerned, all these people are coming into the city. They're doing work. They don't knock. They don't ask. They just come on your property. They're starting to take fences down. They're starting to do trenches. They're starting to do all this. And then who's supposed to clean up the mess? They leave it. The homeowners do it, and it's wrong. You know, you should have badges on and saying who you are and that, and it's not happening. And I asked a long time ago, when we asked for the guide rails, our rails down on the railroad tracks, the gentleman, I think he's from Transfer, because I thought it was the traffic review board. It wasn't. They were going to mention opening some refucking tape on both of them that they put up. It's not been there. I think it helped, even if it's been months, because some people still don't think that's a, they think it's a through street. It's not. And what else did I say? I did not know, I wasn't at the meeting. I know people do have voted for the water bill rates to go up. Usually I'm not tight with water, but this year I'm going to be tight. I'm going to put my water things out, because you know, this is time for retirement and enjoy. And I know a lot of people can't afford it. Not that I can. I could do it if I wanted to. But sometimes we have to surprise and do different things. And I think more people are going to it. They're going to start pumping their own water. They're going to take from the sump pump, put it in a container, or get the rainwater, because when you look at the society today, it's not good. And I know you guys got to do your thing, but sometimes we can cut back, because the city is built up. But I'll tell you, I have a lot of friends, they're building, redoing their businesses on Dairy Queen. Dave's son is going to redo that Dairy Queen in the fall. The other one's going to be done the following year. We got a new Chili's coming in. Mr. Hanson has just been swamped with work. He was a small business, and look what he is today. We're working hard and working hard, and we try to work hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we've got a couple other people in the audience. Anybody else would like to speak under citizen statements? Now's your time. Seeing none, we'll move on to Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are those of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council on a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that item be removed from Consent Agenda for discussion. I don't see anyone registered to speak, so I'll take a motion and assent on consent. Move it.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, can you please remove number 22, Resolution 23-252?
Pulling number 22. Absolutely. Ms. Councilmember Bulo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to comment on item 13, 23-243, for the West Davin Circle and Tech Meyer Park Tennis and Pickleball Court. I had a meeting yesterday with Parks Director Ray Maurer and the Oshkosh Pickleball Club, and just wanted to commend city staff for an amazing job working with them and a great job from the Pickleball Club to come together at the table to work through some creative ideas that they had in the plans.
Very nice. Any other comments on Consent Agenda? Seeing none, if the city clerk will take the roll on Consent Minus, number 22.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
Resolution 23-252, approve special event, Solutions Recovery, Inc., to utilize Menominee Park and city streets for the Recovery Fest Run-Walk Event, September 10, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
And discussion. Floor's yours.
I'll just say I'm recusing, because my wife is a board member at Solutions.
All right. Seeing no other buttons pressed, we'll take the roll on 23-252.
Ford?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated six, with one present.
Moving on to new ordinances. Ordinance 23-256, this is no anticipated action on this item this evening. Approve zone change from Heavy Industrial District to Heavy Industrial District with a planned development overlay for the property located at 3,300 Metalist Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. Orderance 23-257, also no action will be taken this evening. Approve zone change from Heavy Industrial District to Heavy Industrial District with a planned development overlay for properties located at 3,400 Jackson Street. Plan Commission also recommends approval. And ordinance 23-258, amending Chapter 2 and Chapter 14 of the city's municipal code to implement recommendations pertaining to the city's boards and commissions. Staff recommends waiving the rules. No one is registered to speak on this. Counsel, is there any motion?
Move it.
Moving what? Is there a motion to waive the rules and adopt on the first reading? How about that?
You have to bring it forward first, right?
I got to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules first.
Oh.
So moved. You second?
Sure, I second.
Mr. Ford will second. There we go. Any discussion on waiving the rules? If you'll take the roll on...
I guess just, we've got the information here. Just maybe, Mr. Rolloff, just so the public knows why you're doing this.
Yeah, the reason that staff's recommending this is because the terms of office begin on June 1st, so this enables the mayor to make these appointments and get these changes in before the new terms start.
And normally, under ordinance changes, that requires two readings of the council. So what we're doing is we're waiving that second reading. I'm just...
So you can adopt it at the first meeting. Thank you for...
Nope. Appreciate that, council member. From here, I should have added some clarification to that. If there's no other comments on waiving the rules, the city clerk will take the roll on that.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye. We are on ordinance 23-258. Amend Chapter 2 and Chapter 14 of the city's municipal code to implement recommendations pertaining to the city's boards and commissions. I'll need a motion and a second.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion on 23-258? Seeing none, you take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
New resolutions. Resolution 23-259, utilize unity and community funds for sponsorship of teams for the Northeastern Wisconsin Dragon Boat Race Festival on September 16th, 2023. DEI Committee recommends approval. I have no one registered for that, so I'll need a motion and a second from council.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, I believe, defer. Is that the right language, Lynn?
Layover.
Layover. I got it wrong. I had 50% chance there. Lay this over until July 25th.
Mr. A second?
Second for discussion?
Mm-hmm.
What would be the reason to lay it over? What are we looking for?
I need a second first, right?
Did you get, yes, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so we're in discussion mode here?
We're in discussion. Go right ahead.
All right. So if you watched the last DEI meeting, the planning is still very much in progress for this event. Specifically, they're working out whether or not there is going to be a process for distributing the $4,800 in unity and community funds. They were supposed to meet last night, but they did not have quorum. So I think delaying this until July 25th gives them some time to keep pushing those details further, and there's really no consequence in that these funds aren't going anywhere. I think this just gives us all more time.
You can keep going. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I guess there's one other thing that hopefully that can be addressed. I think you're the council representative. The thing I'm concerned with is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're supposed to sponsor the event where the fees then would not have to be paid, and there's more money for paying for the boats. Do I have that correct at all? I know there was a sponsor, some kind of, some type of sponsorship involved with it.
I think Ms. Angie Lee, who's the current chair of DEI, I think that was part of, I think she's on the organizing committee-ish, if Ms. Hayes would, just wants to confirm that for me at least.
Correct.
Thank you. She's not here this evening to answer our questions. That's also part of the reason to lay over is that I think there's plenty of questions and give them some time to maybe put forth some answers and come back. This is definitely not a no. It's just a little more time.
Sounds good to me.
I think I summarized that all right?
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to lay over? Seeing none, she'll take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven.
On to Resolution 23-260. This is the resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $6,405,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purchase bonds, Series 2023A, of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of completing certain capital projects in and for the city, prescribing details of said bonds and the form of bond, authorizing the award of said bonds to the best bidder therefore, levying taxes and related matters. If I can have a motion, any second?
Move it.
Second.
I think Finance Director Van Gompel wanted to say a few words before we did some voting.
Sure. There was a memo covering all of the debt issuance in your packet, and when I put together the memo on that, we were looking at a potential sale date into June, June 22nd. But in working with our financial advisors and in preparation, we prepared what's called an official statement, a preliminary official statement. I believe late this afternoon, council got a copy of that official statement. That's going out to the bond investors. And in that document, we originally were going to move up the sale date to May 31st. You have council members that have been following some of the activity at the federal level, dealing with the federal deficit, and I don't want to get into politics right now, but just to kind of lay out the groundwork. Because of that inaction happening at the federal level of our government, it has raised some concerns in the investment market, so that rates right now are very volatile. And our financial advisor will be talking to myself and the city manager later this week. There's a possibility that sale date that was planned for next week, May 31st, might get delayed one or two weeks. This is kind of fits into the plan of doing a, what we call a parameters resolution, and the parameters are actually outlined in Section 2 of the resolution. And under the parameters resolution, at least for the general obligation debt, one of the things is the interest rate has to be below 5%. And there's some other parameters that are included in that as well. So if those parameters aren't met, then we don't close on the bonds. So because of that, it gives us a little bit more flexibility of when we go to market. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Harry Allen, and Harry has helped the city along with his team at Ellers to do all the work that's necessary. There's a lot of staff time that goes into this process. It starts with our capital improvement plan, where we identify projects, and then we look at financing those projects, and we've worked with Ellers as our financial advisor as we go through that process. So Harry, I don't know if you had any additional comments on any of the debt issues.
Yeah, I'll just provide a couple of quick updates from the time I was here last month. Just as a reminder, the city normally issues both GO notes and GO bonds. This year, there's only GO bonds because of some of the larger issues last year, and everything that's being issued this year falls under the enumerated purposes for bonds. So all that's been repaid over the 20 years. Another question that came up last time was about who at the city will be designated to accept bids on the sale day. The resolutions before you tonight designate the city manager or the finance director of the city to accept those bids. Outside of that, I don't have many updates from the time I was here last month. Again, we're watching what's happening in the market. We have seen a 30 to 40 basis point increase in rates, so 0.3%, 0.4% within one week, which is a very substantial jump, much higher than we've seen all year, and we think that's directly related to what's happening in Washington. So hopefully, once that gets sorted out, we see those rates come back down to where they were. But having this as a parameters does give you that flexibility to adjust as needed. to adjust as needed.
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. So gentlemen, if, and what you're talking about is this debt ceiling, I'm assuming, if this does not get figured out, the volatility will be tenfold. So if we don't meet these parameters of the percentage rate that we're looking for and things go south, then when are we going to incur the, I mean, when are we going to let these bonds out? And how much more then will that, you know, I have to look in a crystal ball. I understand that. But what are the, how can I say this? How could that impact us on the bad side and the good side, you know, if you could look inside that crystal ball?
So we looked at a bond sale that happened today, which was a water utility bond, and you have a water bond coming up soon. That priced at 3.81%. The parameters included in the resolutions tonight authorize up to 5%. So you're meeting that parameter and 3.8%. It's higher than we have seen. It's about 30 basis points higher than we have seen. But it's still, it's just a touch higher than the 10-year average. It's not insanely high, but it is higher than it was.
I think that also, just to help answer that question, I think, you know, by having our financial advisors watching what's happening in the market and looking at what's happening on rates on a daily or even hourly basis, they'll be in consultation with myself and the city manager to determine whether or not we go forward. You know, we have a window and we're looking at, you know, maybe two weeks or so if things don't settle down. We're, I think I'm hopeful that some resolution will come out of the federal government in the near future, which will help settle the rates down. But again, it'll be a competitive basis. People will be submitting bids. And so we just have to determine when's the right time to go and advertise and collect the bids. For example, if things go well next week with the feds and it looks pretty good, we'll look to do it on the 31st. If it's still up in the air, we're just going to wait a week or so. So, and that parameters, you know, worst-case scenario, it comes in at 5.1%. We don't have the authorization from the council to do that, do that issue, and that's okay. We don't want to do that either. If we're within those parameters, I believe we still have the option to say yes or no. Or if we're under that threshold, we're mandated once we do it.
You technically have an option to say no. It's not a good idea to say no, but you could say no?
It was 4.999. You know, maybe we get a little skittish, but in reality, if it's up that, if we're to get that high, it's like, things aren't looking good. Let's get our lowest rate now. And that's what we did last year. We took, we used the same parameters with a much lower number. We took advantage of that, and that has reaped us some really good benefits for this year's budget.
So we have a very substantial amount of money that we're looking at letting bonds out for. If things do go south here and we go beyond that 5%, then what?
We would have to reevaluate the resolutions. We'd have to bring them back, reset the parameters. And I don't see us getting to a market where we are all of a sudden from the three percentages to 5%. Is it possible? Yes. Is it likely? I'd say no. So it would be a full reapproval of the bonds.
Cash flow-wise, we'll be okay. It's just, you know, sometimes we've done these borrowings in July and August, so it's not like we have to do it from a cash flow standpoint immediately. But eventually, we'll have to do it because that's, from our, from our planning standpoint, that's what we've been planning to do. But we'll be okay.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
And just one more comment on the general obligation debt, just so whoever's watching our meeting right now. The general obligation debt is not to exceed $6.4 million. And that's laid out in the resolution. And the parameters talked about how that gets packaged and, you know, the interest rate and those type of things.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, you answered my question. I wanted to know about cash flow and make sure if the debt ceiling doesn't get raised and rate, interest rates go through the roof. I mean, we could wait till July or August if we honestly really needed to. We have the money on hand to do that.
We still should be okay.
Sure.
You know, at that point, we would reevaluate. We also, depending on the timing and everything, we may have to come back and just get another resolution to reimburse ourselves for expenditures that have already occurred.
Okay.
All right. Seeing as no other buttons are pressed, we'll take the role on resolution 23-260.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 23-261, resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $6,55,000 aggregate principal amount of stormwater utility revenue bonds, Series 2023B, of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of completing certain capital projects related to the city's stormwater utility system, prescribing details of said bonds in the form of bond, providing for the payment of said bonds and the covenants with respect thereto, authorizing the award of said bonds to the best bidder therefore and related matters. I'll need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, you'll take the role when ready.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 23-262, resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $7,430,000 aggregate principal amount of water system revenue bonds, Series 2023C, of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, for the purposes of completing certain capital projects related to the city's waterwork system, prescribing details of said bonds in the form of bond, providing for the payment of said bonds and the covenants with respect thereto, authorizing the awards of said bonds to the best bidder therefore and related matters. Motion and a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? You'll take the role.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 23-263, approve annual city licenses renewals. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? If you'll take the role.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Final resolution, 23-264, approve combination Class B license, new license for the Oshkosh Convention Center to North Main Street. Take a motion and a second, please.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? If you'll take the role on 23-264.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now we're on to council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. Number 35, future agenda items, we have, it looks like we need to maybe give some direction related to a non-renewal hearing, possibly June 13th for Red's Pizza. Is the liquor license non-renewal possibly?
I'll let, go ahead. Okay. So Red's Pizza obtained their 2021, 2022 license. During the course of that year, the clerk's office became aware that they closed in September of 2021. So their license renewed for 2022 because they had not yet been closed a year. The city, for those of you that are new on the council, the city has an ordinance requiring you to use your liquor license for at least one 30-day period during the course of a licensed year. We have no record that Red's Pizza reopened and has been using their license. So pursuant to that ordinance, we're bringing it to the council for direction. They have applied to renew the license for 2022, 2023. They are not currently open. So we would, if we get the direction to not renew, we would give them a notice explaining the requirements of the ordinance and ask them to appear at the next council meeting.
Normally, I'd let Mr. Bulow go first, but I'm going to jump in just real quick. If city manager wouldn't mind, or maybe even the city attorney, for those that are new up here, over the last several years, my five years on council, we've made a shift in terms of how we allow unused licenses to either sit on a shelf here, or it used to be that the holders could just kind of hold on to them in perpetuity. We allowed it. And it didn't always end the best for us in terms of economic development reasons. Would you mind just maybe giving them the 60-second hit on that shift and why we do what we do? And I think we've got a handful licenses on the shelf currently, if memory serves me.
We do. What was happening was a lot of licensees were not using those licenses. Meanwhile, you had other businesses that were interested in actively using the license. So we sort of collected the ones that were dormant and have been collecting them here. And we have about, I believe, we're six. And I didn't, the last report I got from the deputy city clerk that-
They gave one out tonight.
We just gave one out tonight, so we're down to five. But we have an inventory, I'll say, of licenses that I think are much more effective when we keep them here so that when somebody walks in the door, just like we did tonight, we have a license available. Otherwise, we're sitting there telling these folks, well, we don't have a license for you. And they say, but, for example, but Red's is closed. Where's their license? Well, they still have it. And then you get into that discussion about why should they be holding that license if they're not using it? This, I would say the same thing to Red's as I've said to others, that since we've adopted this new approach, is that if you actively need one, I can tell you we have five available right now. If Red's doesn't get renewed, we'll have six. So that makes them available to everybody in town. And we now add something to our liquor license application to tell us about the economic impact so that the council can see that this business will provide some benefit to the community, and therefore there's some, an economic development reason to do it. It's been very successful. I did this in my previous community. It worked very well. And frankly, I think it just makes it more available for other businesses. Somebody was just here tonight for the liquor license was there. We've been able to tell these folks, when you need a liquor license, we'll have one for you because of this new way. And it gives them great reassurance. Mr. Hoopman, excuse me. And Mr. Hoopman is probably expecting another business that may need one on Oshkosh Avenue. Eventually, we're going to need a license on Pioneer Island. We want to make them available so that we're not scrambling around looking for one. We've got this inventory.
Councilmember Bulow, and then Mr. Stevenson after.
Thank you. No, and I just had a process question. Have we reached out to Steve at Red's or anybody to ask why they're looking to renew if they haven't been open? Have we had a conversation there?
The deputy clerk, I don't know if she's made any contact, but the establishment is currently up for sale.
Okay.
So, you know, they may use that as part of their sale. I'm not sure.
But we are required to notify them of this pending action.
And then they could come next week and, or in-
It's a pretty formal, just, it's a pretty formal process. And Mr. Ford's shaking his head, so he does recall these. And I think we, the last one we did-
This is kind of the first step, is we get direction from you of, yes, notify them that we intend to not renew it. And then, then they have their opportunity to come and tell you whatever they want to tell you.
Okay. Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, no, I think this is a really good idea. This is definitely economic development, and I get frustrated with some other businesses that just kind of hang on to these. So I think this is a good tool that we're using. I do have one question. Is this, is this the zero-dollar or the $10,000 one? I can't, is it reserve or?
It is not a reserve. It was just a regular-
It's just one of the regular ones.
Yeah. We still have five, plus the $10,000, plus that other one that's, I think, $30,000.
Sure.
So we don't want to get to there because we don't want a business having to drop 10 or 30 grand. That's, that puts them kind of in a hole. And so that's why holding on to these other ones just makes it more cost-effective for somebody who wants to have a liquor license. A lot of these these days are restaurants. So we want them to be able to offer that.
Cool. So unless there's objection, at least by a shaking of heads, can we give them direction to send the non-renewal?
Yeah, I just, I don't like that language. I don't, it's-
It's the statutory language, and I can't change that.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
With that said, I think, and I thought Mr. Ford was going to bring it up, we're very reassuring. It's like, look, if you, if the license isn't renewed, we have some here, and you can come back anytime. So it gives them that assurance because the title isn't the greatest. You're absolutely right. But we, the title is what it is.
Yeah, especially if they're the five-
Oh, these lawyers, I'm telling you.
Wow.
Shots fired.
But yeah, direction-wise, I mean, absolutely. I think we've been pretty consistent, at least since I've been here in the last three years, that our policy is not to allow people to hoard these licenses and use them to try to elevate the cost of their businesses when they sell them. And there's always ones available for folks.
And it's working.
It is. It's working.
Thank you.
Do you have your direction on that one?
Yep, thank you.
Future workshops. June 27th, we have a housing workshop with community development. That is a, what is that? Is that a Tuesday?
That is a Monday.
That is a Tuesday.
Tuesday. Oh, that's-
That's our council meeting.
Council meeting, yeah.
Yep. So that'll be either before or during. You'll let us know. But before, I'm hearing from way in the back.
5:00 PM.
Excellent. 5:00 PM. Count on that. June 28th, we have our first budget workshop. That's regarding CIP debt and special assessments. If memory serves me, that's probably also a 5:00 PM.
Whatever time council would prefer, that's a not council night. That's a Wednesday night. So if we can start at 5:00, that's great. If we have to wait till 5:30, just let the clerk know and we can get it scheduled.
It's usually no more than two hours. If we can keep it 5 to 7, great. If that doesn't work, let Mark's office know and we'll make other accommodations. We've got another meeting between now and then, so. Okay. July 25th, city manager's mid-year review check-in. Anything you'd like to add?
Just for new folks, that's just a kind of informal check-in we do at the six-month-ish mark with the city manager, just to see how things are going, if there's things that we can change in kind of how we communicate in that relationship. So that will be after the council meeting.
Sounds good. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, do you foresee any TIF districts, new TIF districts coming up in the next three, six months?
Well, you just saw what was in the newsletter the other day with respect to the Butemore apartment development, that they indicated that they may be asking for a TIF fund. So that's a possibility.
Right. Then, just a suggestion, would it be possible to do a 15-minute, you know, where there's an audience and they could ask questions also? You know, a refresher and new people, what is a TIF? How does it work? Are there rules for it? When do you do it? When don't you do it? What are successful ones? What are unsuccessful ones? And again, I'm not saying to take an hour with this, or just kind of a refresher for me. And if they're going to be coming up, then I think the audience, you know, the public, they get confused, and I get confused on some of this, how these things work, and the butt four clause, and then all these things. So if someone, you or someone from the staff can take 15 minutes, half an hour tops, to discuss that, I would appreciate that. I don't know if anyone else would.
When during the budget do we talk about the TIFs, the performance of TIFs? We always do during our budgets. If you could remind us, maybe? I don't know, timing-wise, that would help, Mr. Esslinger, but I know we do.
We typically do that as part of our operating budget process. But, you know, before a project plan would get submitted for council consideration, if you wanted, I think I could work with community development. We can get, put together a presentation. Quite honestly, there's, there is a lot of rules and regulations. There's actually a tax increment financing manual that the Department of Revenue puts out, and it covers all of the rules and regulations for administering the tax increment financing program. And they actually, through that manual, have a pretty good explanation of how TIFs work and how it functions. Within our city, our historical trend has been to look at specific projects and create a district for each project. And that way, each project has its own financial evaluation of how it's performing. Other communities may do a larger area and have multiple projects within an area. That's difficult because you might have- area. That's difficult, because you might have a successful component in the area, but you might have some underperforming components in that same area, and they kind of counteract each other. So, the trend in the past for the city of Oshkosh was to be basically project-specific for when we create a tax increment district. We have four, are we up to 41, 42?
43.
43, I'm one behind, sorry. So, but I'd certainly be willing to sit down with our community development director. We also utilize our financial advisors to help in the preparation of the project plan. You have to have a project plan approved for each tax increment district or financing.
So, the district is just more or less the geographical area. The financing is the financial mechanism, the how many years, what's the present value, what's the value after the TIF is dissolved, and the increment in there. The increment that goes then for the developer can use those funds to do the project, right?
Yeah, you hit on all the things we'd probably cover-
Yeah.
-in that little refresher class, so.
And then the butt four clause.
Correct.
Obviously. And, yeah, I mean, I know there are oodles and oodles of guidelines and rules, and that's why, you know, as a council member, you know, I've got to take your advice on whether these are, you know, good, but, and just on the face of it, of whether we place a million-dollar value on something, and then in 20 years, it's worth 30 million, and then, you know, what's the best value? What's the best use of that land? Is it meeting that criteria also, which I'm assuming would be one of the criteria that you'd have to meet?
I think the mayor's question, that we do have a report that we're required now to file with Department of Revenue, and I think part of it is the financial performance of each of the TIFs. I think that's what the mayor's referring to. I'm trying to remember when we-
At what point in the process? Maybe if you want to-
I think we actually-
We don't have any coming anytime soon, maybe if you'd like to take it back to staff, and maybe at the next council meeting, we're-
By law, we're required to take it to the joint review board, so we'll have to talk about when that is. I can't remember when that is. That's a statutory requirement, but we do, in our, we do talk about the status of the tax increment districts when we talk about our operating budgets. In addition, we did have a conversation, staff had a meeting with Moody's Investment Services that actually established the creditworthiness of the community prior to the issuance of bonds, and we should be getting that final rating tomorrow or Thursday. And part of that review process, we went through the existing tax increment districts and where they're at. So, we can kind of cover some of that in a brief update with you as well. There are some that I think will need some attention as we move forward. There are some that have been very successful.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, maybe staff could send around the TIF policy and application the city has. It's actually really thorough and really easy to follow. And I think if we just, with new, you know, this much change on the council, it might be worthwhile sending that around. And if you really want to fall asleep, the budget, actually, if you go, it's way back in the, you know, search your PDF, it's your friend. But they have a breakdown of every single TIF district and its performance. It's really, really helpful.
Right.
Mr. Builo.
I was just going to say that Councilmember Stevenson sent me a three-minute YouTube video on TIF districts that I found help, way, way helpful.
It's good stuff.
That was about my intention, but it was kind of like a Schoolhouse Rock version of TIF districts, and I really appreciate that.
Conjunction junction?
Yeah. If there's nothing else on those, we'll move on to council member announcements and statements. Do we have any announcements or statements? I know plenty of you haven't had a chance to be with your new board or commission yet, but you will be shortly. And then this is the time, if you want to, give a brief synopsis of some of the activities, you know, those boards and commissions are doing. This will be a time for you to do that. So, just as a heads up with that. I do have one, just one statement, brief one. Myself, Councilmember Builo, actually had the honor of attending the annual police awards the other night. Got the, got the chance to, to be a part of an award ceremony honoring many officers and personnel within the Oshkosh Police Department, as well as citizens of the community who performed some extraordinary acts on behalf of their, their community. If you have a chance, for those listening at home, if you have a chance, the event was recorded. It's in, it's Oshkosh Media. It's not too long, but it's a good reminder of the, that's everyday things that Oshkosh Police Department and the folks there do, and a little honoring of those who went above and beyond in their, in their duty this past year. So, Councilmember Builo.
On that subject, have Kleenex available if you watch.
Good reminder. If there's no other council member's statements, we'll move on to the city manager and take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I wanted to add to, to my announcements is the Department of Public Works has launched its new Facebook page. I had kind of previewed that at State of the City, and Mr. Robbie is so excited. He's coming up to just kind of give you a brief overview of what it looks like.
Yeah, Jake is pulling it up on screen right now, but as the city manager indicated, you know, a sneak preview at the State of the City address, and it's quite fitting this week, with this week being National Public Works Week, that we're able to get this social media page to a point where we can have it released to the public, and we can start sharing information on what's going on with the department. And we've got a content calendar that we're working on filling out with our public relations consultant, who is helping us with this. So, we are expecting a number of posts to start going out this week with our National Public Works Week, and starting next week with our regular content calendar. So, we've, this is kind of our first big push for getting the word out and getting attention to that page, so that people become aware of the information that we are putting out through that media.
Well, hopefully, maybe in a couple minutes, or a little bit, we'll watch those likes go up, right? I think we're seeing six likes. Maybe by the end of this meeting, we'll have seven or eight, so. A few more this evening, so. Appreciate the efforts. Always about telling our story and telling it better, right? We've talked about that. I know in my time on council, everything we can do, and anything we can do to keep telling our story and tell it better. So, very nicely done.
Yeah, this is one of those things we've, there's been a rogue page out there that was not created by the organization, and so that is one of our, one of our first combats, is to, you know, try to make sure that our official page is the one that people are tuning into, and not the one that we don't share any information to.
I was just going to say, I accidentally just liked the rogue page.
Make sure you find Rob.
Our public relations people are working with Facebook to try to get that page removed. Unfortunately, they have not been successful yet. So, hopefully, with content going out on our official page, that will change how it is found out there.
I don't have anything to add to that.
Thank you.
What I do have to add is the number 38, Oshkosh Media Best of the Midwest Media Fest Award. Each year, Oshkosh Media takes part in the Best of the Midwest Media Fest, and it's a competition that's hosted by Wisconsin Community Media, but it includes entrants from all over the Midwest, Illinois, Iowa, Kansas, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, as well as Wisconsin. And we're happy to announce that Oshkosh Media received the fest's highest honor and excellence award for two separate productions. One, the 2022 State of the City, which was our all-virtual State of the City address, and the 2022 City Managers Report Top 10 Program. At the end of the year, because we don't have a council meeting at the end of the year, we replace it with a top 10 show. And that, those are the two shows that, that were recognized. They both received the top score in their respective categories, and Jake did this. So, it's, one of the judges gave up several remarks, and I think it's appropriate to talk about that. And this had to do with the 2022 State of the City. Wow, this video was stunning in every single facet. Then went on to say, every single city government should do something to this effect. Creatively, this video showcased so much of Oshkosh that I didn't even know existed. This is the top of the class for local media. And I think that's a reflection on the staff at Oshkosh Media and the great work they do. If they can make a guy like me look good, they can do wonders. So, I appreciate all that they do, and I think State of the City 2022, it was really good. I, the time and effort that these folks put into making the production, there was a, when they were doing the Facebook page, they showed the water treatment plant, and I was in there doing a little spiel during it. It was so loud in there. I was like, there is no way they're going to make this sound good. And when it was, when it went to post-production, you would have thought I was in a quiet room. I mean, they just did an outstanding job of little details like that. It's outstanding quality. The mayor said something about telling our story. This is one way we tell our story, and we're real proud of Oshkosh Media and all the work they do. The other thing I have for, for the council, outstanding issues is in there. Want to give an update, because the fourth one, or, excuse me, the fifth one down, statewide initiatives to improve shortfall in state-local funding. Today was Local Government Day in Madison, so the League of Municipalities hosted an event. Coincidentally, the state senate decided to hold a public hearing on the shared revenue bill on the same day we're down in Madison. So, we basically broke up our meeting and said, we're all going over to the Capitol. So, we had about 100 local government officials there. It was quite impressive. And we, many of us testified for the senate. It's similar to the one we did a few weeks ago with AB 245, which was the assembly version. This is SB 310, the senate version. There are some very hopeful things that are going on. I did not testify. I just registered in favor. And primarily, the reason I didn't register is because Senator Fine, our senator, is on this committee. He's the vice chair of the committee, and he basically motioned me over and said, why don't we go and talk in my office? And so, he left the hearing to just talk to me one-on-one. He also did that with every other municipality from his district, so it was very good. Meanwhile, former mayor, current representative Paul Mary, also invited me to her office, so we talked about these issues and how this was, the different things that were going in motion to make this all happen. So, for the first time in 30 years, I'm actually encouraged that I think we're making some substantive progress. Right now, the proposal that went before the senate was a minimum 10%. There's a lot of communities getting a much higher percentage than that. We're, some of us jokingly say, we're in the 10% club. The senate and the assembly are both having discussions about making that minimum 15%. 10% will get us an extra $960,000, so roughly about $1,004,000. We could see if they went to 15. An extra $1,004,000 over what we currently get. That'll only get us close to what we were getting 20 years ago. That illustrates how much we have not been getting for all those years. The most effective part of it was that the League of Municipalities, and the towns association, and the counties association sat three across in front of the senate, saying, you need to do this. And that message is resonating with the senate, because usually it'd be, well, you shouldn't give it to them, you should give it to us. They work together, and that's why I'm so encouraged. And the senate complimented each organization for doing that. So, I don't want to jinx ourselves, but I really believe that we're making progress. And I'm saying this so that members of the public, call your senator, call your state rep, let them know that state-local fiscal relationship needs to be improved, and these, this piece of legislation will do just that. Happy to answer questions.
Not a question, but just think we should commend city manager Roloff for being instrumental. He's modest, but you were instrumental in keeping those three groups at the table with your expertise and the amount of goodwill you've built up over the years, so.
I was on the other side of the fence in the towns association for years. I called them my exile years. So, I, I'm cashing in those chips after all these years. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.